Order the meeting of planning board for June twenty six, twenty twenty three. Alphabetical roll call attendance, please.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here.
Amy Glassmeyer here.
Kevin Hine here.
Are you in Cohasset or Greenland?
I, I actually would ref- I appreciate not telling you where I am. You know that movie about, uh?
Well, that's the wonder of Zoom. I got on Dave Farick's case because he missed his zoning bylaw meeting when he was in Egypt. There was no excuse to miss Egypt. I don't, you know, it was a thirteen hour time difference, but you know.
So, so I worked.
All right, um, is our applicant here?
Two, yes, um, so I'm going to pull them forward.
We do have need, uh, mid, one set of minutes, I believe, and then some calendar issues to do before we leave tonight, but we only have this one matter on agenda.
So, so Mr. Chair, can I ask that when this one substantive matter is over? Um, if I can be excused because I have a, another, uh, Zoom that is waiting for me out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, okay, and there's, I think John Howland was gonna join us. I don't know if he's out there yet, but, uh.
I don't see him yet.
All right, so our one item tonight is A and R application for Seventy Black Horse Lane. We have four of us. What do we have to do for a vote? Three of the four?
Correct.
Um, Mr. Morrison, Mr. Hassett. Somebody's echoing on it.
I think Greg, if you're listening in on your phone, you have to mute one of them, probably your phone.
Okay, how was that?
Much better.
All right, Greg. Greg, you have the floor.
Thank you. If you could also promote Jeff Hassett, who's in the audience, he's gonna do a share screen of the A and R plan, uh, as well.
He has been promoted.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, Gregory Morse, a registered engineer with Morse Engineering, I'm representing the applicant, Jack LLC. Uh, what brings us before the board tonight is we're seeking A and R endorsement at Seventy Black Horse Lane. The existing property is approximately three point eight acres. It's located in the Residence B zoning district, which requires thirty five thousand square feet of land area and fifty feet of frontage per lot. On the property now exists two substantial structures. There's an existing home that was built in seventeen forty-two. There's an existing barn that was built, uh, sometime in the eighteen hundreds. It's important to note that both of these structures predate subdivision control law in the town of Cohasset. The proposal here is to divide the tract of land into two lots. Each lot would contain one of those buildings. Um, lot A two, sorry, excuse me, A three, uh, would contain the existing house. The lot A four would contain the barn. Both lots are proposed as fully conforming with respect to frontage and area. With respect to subdivision control law, Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-one, Section Eighty-one L, provides a strict definition of what a subdivision is and what a subdivision isn't. The statute lays out three scenarios that are not considered subdivisions and are therefore entitled to A and R endorsement. Typically applicants are applying under the first scenario in the definition, which is that the lots have a frontage on an existing way, whether it be public or private. Uh, but there's frontage on an existing way. Scenario number two is a change in lot lines that does not affect frontage, but affects the shape of a lot. And scenario number three, which is the scenario that we filed under, which is known as the eighty-one L exemption. The eighty-one L exemption is the division of a tract of land with two or more buildings to be divided onto separate lots, where the buildings predate the subdivision control law. Where each of those lots will contain one of the buildings when the subdivision, uh, lot line is endorsed, does not constitute a subdivision and is therefore entitled to endorsement. Um, with this exemption under eighty-one L, it does not require the board to make any determinations on adequacy of the way, presumably because the buildings already exist at the property. There's no increase measurably on traffic or increase in flow to the site. These are buildings that have access, they have utilities, they are substantial in nature. They predate subdivision control law. They're entitled to endorsement under the eighty-one L definition of subdivision. I turn it over to you.
You missed your call, and Greg. You got the wrong degree.
I did?
Should be a lawyer.
Okay, okay, all right.
Um, all right, I'll start with, uh, Clark, do you mind starting? Uh, I'll start with you. Any comments, thoughts?
Yeah, well, uh, certainly the planning board over the last, uh, several years has seen, uh, a lot of plans relative to this, um, and other, um, uh, properties and, and lots of discussion about what Black Horse Lane is and what it isn't. Um, my, my understanding, um, for, for A and Rs is, is that, um, uh, there needs to be access and frontage. It appears that, that there may be access on Black Horse Lane, the private way portion, but not the public way portion. Um, uh, but I, I, I have never really understood exactly what Black Horse Lane, the, the private portion is and how frontage could be taken from it. Um, uh, in addition, um, Greg makes the case that, um, there are two buildings on one site and, um, the, the site is eligible for division, not as a subdivision, but the lot is eligible for division because there's more than one building on the site that predate zoning. Typically, what, what we see are, um, division of lots that have more than one dwelling unit or houses. So if for the purposes of, of, of this, the barn got turned into a house, that would make an increase in, um, uh, you know, potentially use of Black Horse Lane, which may or may not, um, make it overly burdened.
Um, sorry.
That's all I have for now.
Okay, uh, we'll go in alphabetical order. Um, my, my, my concern too is that we're dividing a dwelling and an outbuilding, an accessory building, and, you know, we just had a precedent that we established on, uh, Atlantic Avenue, one thirty Atlantic Avenue, where we denied an A and R in this very similar situation. Um, Carolyn can weigh in on the law, but I, 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 I don't think we can do this with an accessory building. Amy?
Um, yes, uh, the first thing I'd like to say is I really appreciate the historical investigation that, uh, the applicant has undertaken to understand what the long-term deep history of the land use has been. And I find it fascinating as a geographer to look at maps that are representations of reality at a certain point in time. And they are typically, uh, designed to be snapshots through time. But they do not necessarily, and actually, in fact, um, uh, re-articulate what the use possibilities are of the site itself. So I thought it would be useful for us to ask Greg to go through the, uh, most Asian history to understand how they are rearguing their position of the property as we see it now. So that means going back to the nineteenth century. Would you mind doing that, Greg?
Um, yep, I can, I can address all of the comments that were just brought up. If, if now's the time, I certainly will, or.
Well, yeah, let, let, let me hear from, uh, let, let me hear from Kevin in our building inspector and the council. Yeah, let me, let me go through the whole board and our council and, and then we'll, Greg, you'll down to four again.
I would, I would just like the applicant. Um, as existing utilities and, um, whether it has been, um, occupied in any regard in the history of that, uh, use as a, as a dwelling, as a occupied structure. I, I, I will point out that I don't see any utilities marked out on the drawing that's provided.
You, you, you were breaking up a little bit. You're talking about the barn? Kevin?
For, for the barn, that's correct, Tom.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. All right.
For the barn.
Okay, um, Carolyn or John, uh, one of you wish to chime in, or both of you feel free?
Sure, if, uh, that's fine. I, I, I think what we have is, a- although the structures predate zoning, when zoning came in, they were all performing the zoning. So a- again, they conform to the zoning at the time when it was adopted. The main house being number seventy and the secondary use being the barn. Uh, so I, I think the predating zoning doesn't really have any meaning here because, again, at the time zoning was, uh, adopted, it became, it, its use complied with zoning and it still does today as a secondary building. Um, you know, so I, I think that if they broke it up, it would, the barn would become an illegal use. So that's, that's a kinda, the use question I have, the dimensions. You know, they seem to add up, but that's, uh, we still have a use, use issue that, you know, hasn't been addressed. Uh, and secondly, I think utilities to the building, uh, the water line comes again from the main house to the, uh, uh, to the barn, I believe, and there is no, there is no direct sewer line hookup. Uh, because again, there's no address for the barn. Uh, so we're, we're kinda, uh, you, you know, it, we just gotta be careful. It's a barn, it's a utility building. Um, you know, we, and, and that's kinda where we're at. So that, that, those are my two, uh, you know, concerns. Um, regarding that, uh, a- again, the barn itself. And if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, John. Uh, Carolyn, do you want to hear from Greg again in response before you give us some guidance on this?
That, that's fine, Mr. Chair, if you want to go through the historical questions and, and, uh, answer the questions, the board first, I can wait.
Okay, Greg, why not? Go ahead, you have the floor again.
Great, thank you. Um, I'm gonna start with the comment I heard from Clark. Um, whether the barn was used as a residence or not. I may make a lot of references in the next couple of minutes to the A and R handbook. The A and R handbook was published by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. A copy of it is linked on the Cohasset Planning Board website. Um, I imagine you have seen it or read portions of it. Specifically in the A and R handbook, on page seventy-one, it talks about two precedent-setting cases. Sitco versus Braintree, it also talks about Taylor versus Pembroke. In Taylor versus Pembroke, the land court made a decision that the use of the building, um, the use of the building was not a controlling factor on whether A and R endorsement was, uh, entitled or not. And in Taylor versus Pembroke, they were talking about a single-family home, and then they were talking about a secondary structure, which was a cinder block, uh, eighty-eight by thirty turkey barn. And A and R endorsement was found to be proper by the land court in that case. Um, so the use of the building doesn't control A and R endorsements with respect to the barn. Now, the barn here is a substantial structure. It's over two thousand square feet of floor area. It has its own septic system. It has electricity. It has its own heating source. It has water. It, it is connected to the existing home's water service. It does have running water. Um, it has finished space in it. Um, the past uses, my applicant has not occupied it, um, other than for storage. Uh, I don't know what the previous owners of the property used the barn for. Uh, there certainly is heated living space in that barn. The other question or comment that I received from Clark was questions about the type of right-of-way that Black Horse Lane is at this location. Black Horse Lane up to the entrance of this property is a town, uh, maintained public street. Across this property, um, the frontage that were derived off of Black Horse Lane is a twenty-foot private way. Um, that private way has been in existence since nineteen thirty-six. I provided a copy of the nineteen thirty-six plan, which laid out that way, um, in that supplemental material that I submitted to the planning board last week. What exists out there today? The pavement is approximately twelve foot wide. There are grass shoulders on the side of the street. Underneath the street, there's a water main, there's a fire hydrant, there is sewer service, there's electric service, there's utilities. There are turnouts. There's a turnout, uh, right in the middle of the frontage on the existing, uh, house. The turnout's approximately twenty feet by thirty feet. It allows cars to pass each other, um, if one of the cars is in the turnout uh, at that location. So it's a, it's a well-used way. Uh, it is in good condition. Uh, but it is a private way, again, in existence since nineteen thirty-six. Looking at Tom's comments, Tom, your, your comment that I heard from you was very similar to Clark's regarding the use of the outbuilding. Um, again, looking at the A and R handbook, A and R handbook basically says that any building that is in the eighty-one L has to be a substantial structure. And again, I referenced the Sitco versus Braintree and the Taylor versus Pembroke, uh, on page seventy-one of the A and R handbook. We can't be dividing out chicken coops, tool sheds. We're dividing out substantial buildings, and I believe that's what we have in this case here, a substantial building. The substantial barn here is noted on the assessor's cards. Has a value on it.
But, but it's one land court judge's opinion.
Uh, well, there's two cases here.
I know. Sitco didn't really resolve this issue.
So, well, that's, that's what's available to me in the A and R.
No, I, I, yeah, I just looked at the page you just referenced. I just refreshed my memory, I would say.
Yep, um, the comments I heard from Kevin, he was extremely broken up, but the existing utilities, again, under the road. Uh, there's water, there's a fire hydrant, there's sewer and electrical service, um, already servicing both of these structures, uh, you know, readily available to service these structures with the division. Neither the house nor the barn are, are currently occupied. Um, they are just used as storage at this point in time. The comments I receive or heard from, um, the building inspector were regards to predating zoning. We're, we're not here making any claims about zoning. We're here saying that these structures predate the subdivision control law. That's what the deciding factor is. These structures certainly predate the subdivision control law in the town of Cohasset. I provided in that supplemental information plans which go to Amy's comments. We look back historically, um, eighteen seventy-six. We provided a plan. We provided a copy of the assessor's records that show the house being built in seventeen forty-two. Uh, we provided another plan that was dated eighteen ninety-eight. You know, that show both the barn and the house, um, clearly predating subdivision control law. Um, they both certainly both predate zoning, but that's not what gives us any sort of, uh, claim under the eighty-one L exemption. Um, I would add that the dimensional requirements on both of these lots are fully compliant with zoning. Uh, land area is compliant, frontage is compliant, as well as all of the setbacks, side, front, and rear yard setbacks. Regarding the use. Sure, re- regarding the use, I, I understand a barn on its own lot is not permissible in the town of Cohasset. Um, once this lot is created, it is the applicant's intention to convert that barn into a single-family residence. Um, so it would be converted into a fully compliant, um, by right use in the zoning district. I think that addresses the comments that I heard, unless I missed something. I'll turn it back over to you.
Well, you know, but you still, in the end of the day, have no frontage.
So the frontage we have is on a way that was in existence that predated the subdivision control law. And I would add that road, Black Horse Lane there, has received A and R endorsements three times in the past from the planning board. It received endorsements in nineteen sixty-one, two thousand seventeen, and two thousand and twenty. In review of those A and R endorsements in two thousand seventeen, the planning board meeting minutes of the March eighth meeting specifically state, there's vehicular access and utilities, and it meets all current zoning. There was unanimous approval. At the August fifth, twenty twenty meeting, which had yourself, Mr. Callahan, Mr. Brewer, and Ms. Glassmeyer vote five oh unanimously approving frontage on Black Horse Lane at this location for two lots further down the street beyond this. Again, A and R endorsement, uh, in two thousand twenty. So there have been three A and R endorsements, uh, endorsing this. Um, we're not seeking another request that the, um, that the frontage is adequate. That has been vetted in the past. That has been made at this point. This is a paved street with utilities readily accessible, uh, that serves access to two existing buildings already.
Uh, Tom, I don't know, uh, maybe we could ask.
Apparently you're not aware of the position we're taking with your neighbors in ninety-four Black Horse.
I, I've, I've heard peripherally of, of that project, and I think that's significantly different than this.
Well, cum- cumulatively, you're going to have a lot of houses burdening a ten-foot wide pa- strip of pavement.
So the, the pavement out there is, is twelve, and there's up to twenty feet that they have to pass. Now, now on our neighbors, there are not structures that predate subdivision control law, nor is there an existing right-of-way on the street that's on the ground. There is a paper street, which is extremely different in this case. So I see significant differences between this and what's beyond us. I think the board, you know, probably voted in the proper fashion and is, I, from what I understand, requiring a, either a subdivision plan um, to create proper frontage on that property. That's a much different application than this here, where you have an existing way that has existing houses on it, that has full access to utilities, um, that was laid out prior to subdivision control law, that has had previous endorsements of three planning boards prior to this one, uh, further down the street. I, I see that as a much different scenario than the budding property.
Go ahead, John, great.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I would just see, from a, uh, you know, a- again, from a practical standpoint, can, can two cars pass each other on the coming in? Uh, you know, we were out there the other day and witnessed that a truck had to back up to let the car by because there wasn't enough room to get into the road.
They absolutely can, Sean. There's a, there's turnouts at, on, on the right-of-way that's Black Horse Lane, right in front of this address. There's a turn on the side of the pavement, and when we were out there, we witnessed a dump truck and a car that did pass each other. So.
Well, I, I think the dump truck had to back up on the lawn to get by because they can't pass each other at the pinch point. Uh, I mean, not only myself observed that, but the, uh, the director of the DPW as well and, and voiced the same concern. And, and we just seem to be, the, 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 it doesn't seem to be. I, I'd see to be an issue Tom's trying to raise, but we, we're not getting an, an answer to on that point, but that's just, you know, we, we talked about it the other day. And, you know, as I say, we witnessed the ca- cars having to back up to get around each other because there was no room to get by.
Okay, and Greg, before you respond, Carolyn has some commitments to another town meeting, so I want to get her thoughts in as soon as we can. So Carolyn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I want to pick up, uh, where Greg Morse was leading off, um, with respect to the definition of what is a subdivision and importantly, what is not a subdivision. And, um, one of the, uh, things that, uh, ways that Greg was describing this is that, you know, this, these lots here have frontage along a way that was in existence prior to the adoption of the subdivision control law. I want to read the rest of what the statute says there in that regard, because it isn't just that there be a way in existence under the subdivision control law. It's also that that way um, has, in the opinion of the planning board, sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic. Now, I, I, I raised that just because you're having a lot of discussion about the adequacy of the way. But I also then want to just let the board know that that would be your normal analysis if you were looking at just a conventional A and R plan. But you're not looking at a conventional A and R plan. You're looking at an A and R plan that submitted under the existing building's exemption under eighty-one L. And when we look to the two cases, um, the Sitco and the Taylor case, when we look to the two cases that Mr. Morse mentioned, you know, the court in the Sitco case, which was an appeals court decision, um, said that we, the, the, uh, requirement that each lot have sufficient frontage on a way is not incorporated into this eighty-one L exemption. It is simply that the eighty-one L exemption applies to the division of a tract of land on which two or more buildings were standing when the subdivision control law went into effect in the city or town. Um, so I, I don't want us to get too distracted with the adequacy of what the way where they're relying on this existing structures exemption. Now, I, I don't disagree with Mr. Morse's, uh, general description of the Sitco and the, the Taylor case. Um, but, uh, Mr. Chairman, you alluded to the fact that the Taylor case is just a land court decision. And certainly not to belittle anyone on the land court, but there's significance in that statement, which is that this is nothing more than a trial court judge's opinion. It does not have any sort of precedential value on any other town other than Pembroke and that particular property. The only appellate court case that we have that has addressed this eighty-one L exemption so far has been the Sitco Petroleum versus Braintree case. And in that case, the court talked about substantiality of these buildings. You don't find substantiality written into the statute on the eighty-one L exemption. But, you know, we're all talking about chicken coops and tool sheds. Well, that's exactly one of the things that was, um, raised in the Sitco case. And the court, you know, basically said that, you know, a claim that a detached garage, a chicken house, or a woodshed qualifies under this exception might present a different case. So in other words, the court left open the, the, the question of whether outbuildings would qualify for this exemption. And in the Sitco Petroleum case, we were talking about, in the court's mind, uh, you know, buildings that had some substantiality to them, not just in terms of their size, but as to their function and use. So then we fast forward a few years later and we get the Taylor case. And, uh, the Taylor case, yes, is a residential, single-family house and a turkey barn slaughterhouse turned into some sort of a garage storage unit. And the Taylor case, um, you know, said that they don't find that this substantiality argument that was raised in the Sitco case is necessarily controlling because it's not mentioned in the statute. Be that as it may, the Taylor court then went on to find that that particular turkey barn, um, in the Taylor case actually was a substantial structure, given its size of, you know, something like. Given its size of, you know, something like eighty-eight feet by thirty feet, something to that effect. And the fact that it had its own um elec- electricity and its own cesspool. That's all we have right now for case law. Um, the question of whether or not you could take a single-family house. And some sort of outbuilding such as a garage or a barn. That has traditionally been, you know, an accessory used to that single-family house or. Dare I say, a just a larger version of a storage shed. There is no definitive case law at this time that says. That type of an outbuilding and a single-family house absolutely qualify for the single lot exemption. That is still an open question to be decided by the court. I'm not suggesting that uh Cohasset has to become the test case for that. But I I do want to be clear that um, this plan that is presented before you under this exception. The board certainly could endorse it. Um, but there is nothing compelling in the case law at this time that would compel the board to endorse this plan.
And I was correct in pointing out that one thirty Atlantic just a few weeks ago confronted the same situation.
Correct.
I don't think it was a barn. I think it was a old garage, but uh. Confronted the same situation and we denied that endorsement. Um, Greg, do you want a last word or or response to Ms. Murray?
You know, our goal here was to make two lots that were fully compliant. Um, and, you know, the adequacy of the way I I concur that we. We don't necessarily need to be looking at that under than eighty-one L exemption. But, I mean, I think I think these lots would stand generally on their own with. With the existing way out there reliant on those former endorsements by the planning board. Um, that the way has been found acceptable beyond this property.
And you're you're suggesting that the board can't correct the past mistakes.
Three past mistakes made by three sitting members tonight. Okay. Okay, so so I'm, you know, I'm I'm compelled and I'm thinking about uh another section in the. In the um A and R handbook, uh which is plans that show A and R zoning violations. Um, on page forty-seven, which is Smalley versus Planning Board of Harwich, which has a case that's extremely similar to this. Um, with an existing house with a separate barn. And that sought the eighty-one L endorsement, but it showed zoning violations on the plan. The planning board in that case refused to endorse that plan and that went to Superior Court, which overturned the planning board. And then that was appealed to the Mass Appeals Court, which upheld the Superior Court, that it was entitled to endorsement. Now that plan showed zoning violations. If we theoretically here changed our barn lot so it had zero frontage. A zoning violation. And came in under the eighty-one L provision. It seems that Smalley versus Planning Board of Harwich entitles the plan to an endorsement because both structures would predate zoning. And that's been upheld by two courts. Not saying that's what we're gonna do, but that's what we want to do. We want to have a lot that has fifty feet of frontage.
As I was, yeah, as I was just saying, um, Chairman, even in the Sitco case, the Sitco case addressed. The frontage issue and said that frontage is not something that the board. Looks at when we're talking about an eighty-one L exemption, the existing buildings exemption. So yes, you could present a lot with zero frontage. Um, you know, that that might be a bit extreme, but yes, you could present a lot that had non-compliant frontage. And still be entitled to the eighty-one L endorsement. You know, the court also decides the Smalley case, the courts went on in the in the Palets case versus Tisbury. To to talk about what happens to those houses and those structures on those lots that do not conform to zoning. You know, uh, there was a an argument that was advanced that they are entitled to pre-existing non-conforming status. Under chapter forty-eight, section six, and the court said, no, you're allowed under eh forty-one eighty-one L. To separate out those buildings so that each building is on its separate lot. But um, you know, the fact that there, those lots or those structures on the lots. May not comply with zoning simply means that they may need to get, you know, variances. To do anything further to those lots or to those structures on the lots. Um, you're not being presented here with non-conforming lots or non-conforming frontage.
Amy.
Um, I think that the line of argumentation that we have arrived at. Is efficient to indicate that as we stand. We do not have the circumstances necessary to abide. With the applicant's uh desires.
Making a motion.
Um, I could uh convert that into a motion. Under what conditions would I be able to do that?
Go right ahead.
Um, the planning board, after considering the information that was provided to us this evening. Uh, recommends that the request. As per the applicant be denied. I'm not proficient enough to add any addition.
It's it's simple. It's simple. Either we are moving to approve or deny the application.
So the technical term is endorsement.
Endorsement.
Actually approving the A and R.
We are in a position where we are not uh.
The motion is to deny the endorsement.
Correct. Thank you.
It, Mr. Chairman, if I could just interrupt to, if that is the direction the board is going to take. I would ask that the board um state some sort of basis for the denial in the record.
Any further, any discussion on that, Kevin?
Yes, um, I apologize for the earlier spotty connectivity. I hope you can hear me uh a bit better now. Um, I would just like to ask the applicant for additional information on the barn. Is there a foundation for it and of what sort? Is there flooring? Um, and if so, please describe. Um, and um, I would like more information. A barn is a term typically used for a structure that is used to house. Livestock. So I'll leave it at that and I'd just like some additional information on the structure itself.
Sure, the structure is uh wood-framed. It's two stories in height. It has uh granite block and concrete foundation. Um, it's insulated. It has running water. It has a septic system. It has finished living space in it. Um, I'm not aware of any point in time where there were animals in it. Um, it's, it's been used as a studio. Um, you certainly could, it could occupy it. Um. You know, Miss, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think at this point, we've, we've heard a lot of discussion on this. Um. You know, it, the, the case law, I think that that we, we have in the A and R handbook, you know, lends itself to. To making an endorsement on this plan. But if that's not gonna be the temperature of this board, and I get the indication that it's not. Um, I think on behalf of the applicant, I'd like to request a withdrawal without prejudice on this application.
Anyone comment, Carolyn?
No, that it does require a vote of the board at this point to to withdraw, but I have no further comment.
So a motion would be changed to allow the applicant to withdraw.
Yeah, accepting a withdrawal of the application.
Cassandra.
Are you moving that, Clark?
Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the applicant's uh. Uh, request to withdraw the uh A and R under eighty-one L.
Without prejudice.
Second.
Without prejudice, meaning for the non-lawyers in the room that they can bring it back.
Of course.
Um, okay, it's moved in second and any further discussion on it? Okay, alphabetical roll call. All in favor of the motion?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Me Glassmire, aye.
Kevin Hein, aye.
All right, Greg, let's keep the dialogue open.
Very much appreciate that. Uh, we'll be in touch. Thank you very much for this evening.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Carolyn, thank you for your help. If you have some other town to serve, feel free to depart.
I do indeed. Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everyone.
And John, thank you for your help. You don't have to stick around if you don't want to.
Yeah, thank you. I'll be in touch, I'm sure.
Yes, okay.
Alright, thanks, everyone.
Okay, um, alright, so um, and by the way, we we probably will want to have. Executive session shortly on ninety-four Black Horse. Um, we may be seeing something shortly from them, but uh. Nothing, nothing definitive at this point. Uh, so we have minutes tonight for June twenty-first. Does everybody have a chance to look at them? I think Angela distributed them a week or two ago. If so, I'll have a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty-first. Second, Amy, you second? Okay, all in favor, Clark?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Glassmire, aye.
Kevin Hein, aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, Cassandra is gonna lead us through some scheduling issues. Um. Our next meeting is now scheduled for August sixteenth. Unfortunately cannot be changed, which I would love, but I may, may, may not come to the meeting anyway, so Amy, just be prepared if I don't. Um, what do we have that night? You said we have a large home and we have a revision to a site plan.
Yes.
Okay, how old is the site plan?
Two thousand and eight.
Eight?
Eight.
What's the property?
Twenty Parking Way.
Twenty Parking.
Doctor Pompeo's.
Oh, okay, that's a long time ago. Okay, and then a large home review, right? Uh, so you're looking at the sixteenth and then what are you looking at for a schedule beyond that?
Uh, September sixth would be the one after that.
Okay, which is two days after Labor Day?
Hmm, yes.
Yeah, Labor Day is soon as.
That would make sense, yes.
Yeah, and then, you know, come September, we're gonna go back to two meetings a month.
I can say right now that I will not be able to be in attendance at that meeting.
Which one? The September one?
Uh, no, the uh uh August sixteenth.
Okay, well, then you just decided whether I'm coming or not, or whether I'm gonna celebrate my birthday. I'll do it here.
Well, I I feel very bad about that.
No, that's all right. No, I I knew this was coming anyway and, you know, fortunately, two weeks ago, we had nothing on the agenda and all of a sudden, things popped out of the woodwork, so. Uh, but we'll go back to two, two a month in September. If again, we are light on applications, um, you know, we have plenty of zoning things to discuss. The Bylaw Committee is meeting. Monday night and then we have to set our schedule for into uh town meeting. We will be doing that on Monday night and and on Monday, we are anticipating a. Um, more substantial edits and uh material on the revised Article Four from Judge Cutman, so. Um, and we will discuss the survey that had very little responses and I don't want to discuss the survey here frankly. But uh, uh, you know, you're all welcome to join in on that meeting on Monday night. It's starting at seven instead of six thirty, right? Clark, I I hope you were aware that we start, the judge had requested we started a half hour later that night, so. Amy, your hands is up.
I would request that during the la- next six weeks, that we. Ensure that the planning board is aware of. The various machinations that are associated with the zoning bylaw working group and also um, the. Zoning. Uh, committee, because there are uh issues that I think. Overlap significantly and we would want to know in advance what is the circumstances.
Alright, I I I'll say this about that. There's two of us on the zoning bylaw committee. And we just got the zoning bylaw, uh, the zoning board of appeals member finally uh on the committee. Um, I try to update it as often as I can, every time I can, and I will on the sixteenth. If we get through those two hearings in a relatively quick manner. Um, because after the meeting on the sixteenth, we might have two bylaw committee meetings under our wing. And have a, be a lot further along on where we stand on Article Four. Um, I will tell you that there is a member of the bylaw committee who is working on with the. Alternative Energy Committee on Possible Amendments to Wind and Solar Bylaws. Some of the solar stuff does have to move into Article Four for the recommendation of Judge Cutman. And believe it or not, we could do all these other zoning changes and the AG will focus on. Are we dealing with solar uses in our table of uses? And if we're not, they'll throw out the whole amendment. And tell us to go back to the drawing board. So there will be some things on that, but um, I can tell you that wrapped into Article Four. Is inclusionary zoning. And we want to set more clearly what are the criteria for doing it onsite, offsite, blah, blah, blah. Uh, accessory dwelling units is probably on the, on the agenda for that. Uh, Article Five, the table of dimensions will just be housekeeping changes that are generated by the terminology in Article Four. The substance of Article Five will be in the spread. Uh, so that, that's what's on tap is is Article Four and things related to Article Four. Is really what's the main attraction for the Fall Town meeting. Wind and solar will be added on. Um, and I'll also report that Cassandra and I had a second meeting today with, town has been given a consultant. Uh, with respect to housing choice, the state has given us a consultant. They have looked over the properties that we had identified on the bylaw committee as possible. Uh, locations for an overlay district. Uh, we gave them some refinements to that. Sorry if you didn't know about it, Clark, or you just couldn't make it, but I'll I'll bring you up to.
I had to take my dad to the dock.
No problem, no problem. So they they're gonna come back with us. Uh, probably um, circulate a redo of their map that they did. And then we're gonna start circulating it to boards and see what everybody thinks. Uh, you know, basically, they've been told to, for the moment, identify properties toward the North Situation Station, identify properties to the. Cohasset Station, the vast majority are in the Cohasset Station. We suggested to them get, get them, wherever they identified properties in a residential district, get that out. Um, but they've identified properties where we can do compliance. They have some, you know, some, at least. Preliminary build-outs there is what would be built and uh, so, you know, so far, so good. The, the work product is is good, so. Uh, the next time we might formally meet with them might be at a joint meeting of the bylaw committee and perhaps this board and the select board. I think if we can get as many boards together at one time to hear the presentation. Um, but it's, it's not super eh eh super involved as we thought, you know, at least identifying the properties, so. Um, we possibly could have the housing choice zoning ready for. Um, spring rather than next fall. Next fall would be the absolute deadline that we'd have to have something, so. Um, you know, we're going off on that front, so things, things are moving along. I've been to two meetings this summer with the select board to bring them up to speed. On what's going on, you know, they they've incorporated these things into their goals and objectives, so uh. Um, you know, we're trying to do the reach out. It's good that we're gonna have a ZBA member now that we can have a direct contact. I also got to reach out today for Rob Hillman of the Advisory Committee. They want to get on board liaising with us sooner rather than later. Rather than waiting till the last minute of town meeting, so I just got to bring Rob up to speed on the materials that the judge has produced. And I will have more for Monday's meeting, so.
Hey, uh, something that everyone should know about that came up last week. Apparently, there's a developer who has a five-acre parcel on North Main Street. Um, about five hundred feet to the west of where I am.
Yeah.
Uh, who had, who uh has been. Who, who has been doing, trying to do outreach with the neighbors because they want to put a hundred units in residential B zoning district that abuts Wheelwright Park and Barnes Wildlife Sanctuary. It's a former, you know, sort of work.
It's described as a joint.
Ad hoc work lot that's been used for perhaps generations is
As a dump, yeah.
There's a tree company that's, that, that leases it now. But some developer got a hold of it and for some reason, maybe they didn't realize that we're in safe harbor for forty B because what they're proposing is like a forty B style project of a hundred units. Scale-wise, it's, it's a half an Avalon on a tenth of the size.
Don't read one four three.
Supported by zoning.
Yeah, if you don't read one four three, take a look and you'll find the post. The post will have the subdivision plan, you know, their plan as the picture for the post, so you can pretty much find it. It has over a hundred comments. I have tried to chime in for reality checks, but apparently the developer only reached out to neighbors. I have been told they did speak to the select board and.
No, they, they did a, and they did a sketch that looks like it was about an hour's worth of work on a, on a, by an hour.
And they, they don't, they, they very politically don't mention forty B. They're not saying they're.
Well, the, the only way it could be done is under forty B. Because it's not supported by zoning.
Right.
Not big enough to be a cluster district. So all, all it's really done is gotten my neighborhood all excited.
Yeah, and, and it's outside the half-mile circle that we saw today of the north, of the Cohasset train station, so it couldn't, couldn't fall under housing choice that we wanted it to, but.
The interesting thing is a larger scale development like that under housing choice, that's what it's all about. But in other zoning districts like the Highway Business District, mixed use and, and housing like this is allowed with a, a special permit from the ZBA.
Yeah, and I'll tell you on the bylaw committee, you know, to the extent we've discussed this, you know, we are continuing to move in the direction that housing choice would be an overlay in the three A commercial districts and to stay away from the residential districts and this potential special permit, except we haven't come to any conclusions yet, but we're discussing the idea of forget about multifamily in the residential districts at all. You know, leave it Village Harbor and, and three A. Again, no conclusions have been made, but this project certainly doesn't qualify for zoning at the moment and why it's being floated and the means it's being floated, but I, I welcome you all to read it and read all the comments and this firing people up. I know, Clark, does your neighborhood have a name that we can give it? It'll be the, the such-and-such activist group or something. But it's, it's.
Not yet, although.
Did you, did you?
You might come up with one.
Did you, uh, did you get?
The ad hoc frontage neighborhood.
Did you get the letter?
I did not, no.
You did not? Oh, so you weren't considered close enough of an abutter to get it?
Yeah, no, I heard about it from a butters.
Yeah, yeah, so. Anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss quickly? Otherwise, we'll break it up.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Seconds, all right. Roll call. Thank you for being here tonight. Amy especially, wherever you are, and Kevin, you're obviously in transit as well. Thank you for being here.
Aye.
Brewer, aye, Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Congratulations, Tom, and you got the meeting done in less than an hour.
It's a new record.
Way to go.
A new record.
It is. You later, have a good month.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see you on the sixteenth. Thank you. Thank you, Cassandra.
You're welcome.